Very good afternoon to you and welcome. A few weeks ago, well, I mean, not long ago, we met for a Buildathon. And we had a wonderful time as we raised funds for the building of the Northern Caribbean University Church. We had great music, we had some exciting interviews, and we had a lot to talk about back then. We actually showed you some of the plans that were ahead, of which some are now behind us, meaning that we have moved one step ahead. And so this is why we're here today, to bring you an update. I have Dr. Owen Roberts with me, who will be giving us a little more of an idea of why we're meeting today. Dr. Roberts, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I appreciate that. We are so excited for this opportunity to be sharing with a global audience of alumni and friends today. And both Dr. Neil Reed and myself will be guests of your program to be able to do that. And so we are trying to inspire and encourage the donor group in terms of alumni and friends around the world to be a part of this very sacred and noble project. So with that being said, we are going to start with a prayer, and Dr. Neil Reed will offer that before we get going.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Let's bow our heads forward to prayer. Father, this is your mission to which you have called us. And we have assembled to give an update to those individuals you have called to support this project. We pray that you will be with us, be with them, and allow things to flow seamlessly. We thank you, Lord, for what you have already done in moving this initiative forward for your honor and glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. And, you know, Dr. Neil Reed has been there from the beginning, so to speak. And Dr. Reed, just a few words from you, just to say how excited you are today to see the project moving from where we were when we last met.
Well, Mr. Kelly, thank you for the opportunity to be on the program and just to share briefly. This is a long time in coming, and I'm so excited to see what God is doing on the ground. As you may have known, since 2003, well, 2003 to 2006, I served as pastor of the university church. And God helped us with the support of a union and the conference to get this plan moving forward. And to see things happening, to see the workers on the site and the trucks on the site in collaboration with Desmond Young and Pastor Haye and President Brown and Dr. Roberts. This is the day the Lord has made. Let's rejoice. I don't want it to be used on Sabbath, but on occasion like this. Thank you.
We are indeed rejoicing. And at this point, we want to take a look at what's happening with the project. And so we're going to, well, Dr. Roberts?
Thank you again, Mr. Kelly. And so we're going to share with you, hopefully to update you, but also to inspire you and to encourage you to join this worthy project. So thank you, my friends. Both Dr. Reed and myself will share. So we're talking about a legacy, building a legacy for generations at the Northern Caribbean University Church complex. Truly, this institution has been a lighthouse, a citadel, if you please, on this hill that's been spreading its light, not only to the region, but around the world, where students and graduates from all professions have been engaged in work in the region, that is, in the Bahamas, in the USA, in Canada, in UK, and yes, in the five conferences here in Jamaica. So we're excited, and we are inviting you to join us in this venture. With that being said, we are asking, as we think about recalibration of this particular program, that all hands come on deck in order for that to occur. And so both Dr. Neil and myself have been working after Pastor Brown and Pastor Levi Johnson has reached out to me to ask me to join this effort. I'm so humbled and honored to be a part of this. And these are some of the individuals who are what we call the project drivers. This is now a project driven by the Jamu Union, that's the Jamaica Union of Southern Adventists, and of course, in collaboration with the ACTU, that's the Atlantic Caribbean Union as well. And so it's a joint effort of partnership between both unions, as well as the University and Central Jamaica Conference. We are so grateful for the privilege that all of us have to be called at such a time, like Ni'amia, to be in this space, to ensure that God's house will be built for His glory. And so indeed, we are considering how this will be done. So we want to give you a brief update in terms of some timeline and some facts.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. We're glad to have you a part of the team. We could not have reached where we are without you. In fact, this town hall was a part of your idea, and we're happy to see it realized. Looking at the screen, you see in 1907, with an appeal from the Jamaica field, the General Conference took an action to support the planting of a West Indian Training School. In 1913, unfortunately, the school closed, but thank God, in 1919, it was reopened in Mandeville. And so as you can see further on the timeline, in 2019, both the university and the church celebrated its centennial existence. And we're happy to see that the church is considered the first building that will be built in the new century. I'm so happy to know also that after transitioning from NCU in 2021, that the building project got underway. And we are excited to see not only the building going up, but also the philosophy surrounding this building. So let's look at the next slide, and you'll see what we are talking about in terms of the mission, vision, and need. The Northern Caribbean University Church complex will function as a model. We're looking for a model and a citadel, a bull walk against the encroachment of the philosophies of the world, of Seventh-day Adventist practice, teaching, and preparation of values-based ambassadors. Everyone who enrolls at NCU is an ambassador, not only to earn a living through pastoral care or healthcare or educational business, but an ambassador for the kingdom of God. And as you will see in bold, that the core of the Seventh-day Adventist education is the spiritual component, which is to prepare men and women for life in this world and for the wider joy and greater service in the world to come. And that's why we have designed this building around two principles. And when we put those two principles together, you see the cross. The vertical principle, the Father is looking for worshippers. And so student, faculty, staff, community individuals are invited to come and worship on this campus. It will be a house of prayer for all people, baptisms and weddings and baby dedications. And during my time, we had the National Security Prayer Vigil, and that will continue. So that's the vertical component. Then there is also the horizontal component, where by the left hand and the right hand, we are pulling the world together and the church together to serve our community by way of tutoring and food bank and God's closet, where those who are seeking clothes to prepare themselves for a job interview or for school, students can come and find clothes, medical clinics, medical, dental, opto, eye clinic can be put in place where people can come and be fitted for better health and for service beyond in the community. So we're so happy that this is in place in terms of the philosophy. And as we build, we are building toward that goal in mind. So Owen, can you show us what we're looking at in terms of the building?
Yes, indeed. And so indeed, this is what the architects have designed with respect to this building. So Dr. Reed, continue.
All right. So you can see that we are looking for to raise $6 million. This is $6 million US dollars. Why so high an amount? Well, we are seeking not only to build the church, but also to fully equip the church in every aspect. Yes, the church, the seminary, and also a community center. So we don't just want to have an empty building, and so hence the $6 million. Let's take a look at what the inside would look like. Okay, we are looking from above the podium, looking out towards the entrance, the lobby, to the left and to the right. This sanctuary, Mr. Young will talk about, will seat some 1,600. It will be state-of-the-art, cooled by air conditioning. And on the left and right of the screen, you'll see that there will be doors that could be folded back so we can allow the cool Mandeville air to come in. So this is really what the inside will look like. We're also mindful of COVID, that while many churches have benches, we might want to consider having chairs so that we can reconfigure the meeting space to deal with the current situation or future situations to come. And the next slide will show you some of the breakdown of the features of this building. The main sanctuary is some 14,000 square feet, the chapel, 4,000 square feet, that will seat approximately 300. Right on down to number 17, the basement area, which we're actually working on. It will enclose some 10,000 square feet of space for all type of community-focused activities. Owen, would you mind sharing some more about what we are calling our people to do as we look at this model of vertical and horizontal ministry?
Thank you, Pastor Reed. It's very important that we all realize that this kind of venture and in relationship to fundraising is about relationship. And so while we make a living by getting what we get, but it's very important that we make a life by what we give. And so it's important that giving is a very essential part of living. And so it's a relationship that we have with our family members, with alumni and friends, and with corporate and NGOs that may exist in our spheres of influence. And so we're inviting you to consider this very noble and sacred project. Like Ni'amia, we want to garner in all of God's resources because we know it's out there. This is not hard for God at all because He has provided. And so we're inviting all of you as friends of NCU and alumni of NCU to give, to join this effort so that it can be a success. To give you some further confidence about where we're heading, this project right now is under the auspices of the Jamaica Union and of course, Pastor Everett Brown, the president of the union, and his team are at the head of this particular function. And so what you're seeing on your screen is a network of giving and how giving will occur in the both unions. That is, as we focus on the alumni and friends of alumni across the region, we're anticipating that individuals in the Jamaica Union, in all five conferences and the four conferences within the ACTU Union will be joining hands as we receive and garner in the resources that God has already provided. And so, friends, we're looking forward to this great project and noble project being accomplished. We are reaching out to our friends in the US and to Canada and the UK. I can tell you already, we are seeing experiences with those in the Georgia Cumberland Conference. And Dr. Reed can speak more about that as we proceed. But I want to assure you that we have restructured the way this is happening so that the funds or the donations that you make will go directly to this project and nothing else. In addition to that, we have actually established an office for fundraising at the Union Administration Building. And on the right, you can see exactly what will be the components of that office as we ensure that we can attend to the needs and to the questions and to the requests and the receipts of those contribution of our donors. And so we are setting up a machinery that will surely take us beyond the fact that we want to build a church complex is how we'll do that. In addition to that, we have a structure in place, we have a process in place, and we have systems in place to ensure that that will occur. And so these are the drivers you see on the right-hand side of the screen. These are the drivers of the project, 15 members of that. And their terms of reference, which is basically the points of accountability that these members will be expected to fulfill. And so they're holding themselves to their commitment as well as being held by the donor group as well. In addition to that, we have already a steering committee. And of course, the steering committee likewise is a part of the structure. We have a term of reference in which they are being held accountable for the accomplishment of these goals. And we have the church, a regular church board, who has a specific responsibility. And by the way, as Pastor Haye and ourselves have spoken about this, this is not your regular church building project, but everyone has a specific role. And I just want to encourage you and to give you the confidence that we have put in place a structure, processes, and systems that will ensure that this work will be accomplished. This work will not fail. This work will not stop until it's completed. And the three major principles that guides this work is the principle of transparency, the principle of accountability, and credibility. We will be endeavoring to update the stakeholders, all stakeholders, once per quarter with a global town hall meeting like this to inform them of the progress and to let them understand where their contribution is actually going. So with that being said, I want to give you the confidence of that. So how can you give? How can you get involved in terms of giving? So take a moment. This particular donation matrix you're seeing here actually defines a place for all of us to give to this cause. So how can we reach this target of $6 million? Well, ladies and gentlemen, brothers and sisters, this is how it can be done. Here are some simple ways. If we can identify and get 120,000 donors to give at least $2 US dollars each month for 24 months, for two years, we would have reached the target. Or the same number of donors, 120,000, giving $5 over a 12-month period, each month, we will reach the target. The same thing would be true if it's two gifts in a year of $25. And you can go down and look at the number of donors and the amount that would be expected in terms of the ability to give. So this is why we're stating very clearly, this will not fail. Because with this kind of God-given wisdom and direction, my brothers and sisters, alumni and friends, this is possible. And with God's help and by His grace and for His glory, we can accomplish it. This is a pledge card. We're asking you, if you are planning to do that, to complete that card because it's important that we have your phone contact, that we have your email so that we can acknowledge your gift. All gifts will be acknowledged, and we want to ensure that those gifts are recognized. With that being said, my brother and friend Pastor Reed will now talk about how we will actually do that giving in a online giving mode as well as how we will recognize.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. As you see on the screen, we recognize that in this DNH, few people will have the privilege to walk into a church and drop their contributions in a box or in an offering plate. And so with the rest of the world, we have gone online. You will see here that we have a venue, a portal through Adventist Giving Online. If you simply type in this email, this address, this website address, adventistgiving.org, with the additional identifiers, you will be able to make a contribution to the NCU Church Building Fund. And once you've done that, you send an email to belvedere treasurer department@gmail.com or text your name and your contact information to the church treasurer. This would be for the United States. Also Cash App, most of us have access to Cash App. You can also make a contribution to the NCU Church Building Fund by way of dollar sign Belvedere SDA. Email your contact information and the fact that you have made a donation to the treasurer, and your donation will be so noted. We also have an option to use the Inter-American Division. Those who wish a tax receipt when they file their taxes at the end of the year in the United States may wish to send funds by way of IAD. The Belvedere Treasurer can also give you a receipt. And on the right, you'll see wire transfer information. For those in Jamaica, there's also a portal at the Central Jamaica Conference, and we are working on a portal that will be accessible through the Jamaica Union. So there are multiple options. When you attend the NCU Church, you can bring your offering, put it in an offering envelope, write "NCU Church Building," and it will go to the Church Building Fund. So thank you for your willingness to contribute. And we want to, Dr. Roberts, acknowledge those who contribute. Doesn't matter how large or how small. We're looking at putting in the lobby or in a special heritage room, trees of life. I say trees because each tree can only hold 220 leaves. We want to acknowledge your name, members of your family, or if perhaps you want to make a contribution in honor of a beloved who may have passed on, you will have the opportunity based on your giving level. So if all you have is a dollar, make the contribution. If you are connected to an institution and you can give 25,000 US or 100,000, there are also other means by which we will acknowledge your contribution. So it's not about the acknowledgement, it's about responding to God's call to be a cheerful giver. And while we have tangible ways to acknowledge your gift, the best acknowledgement will come from God Himself when you hear from His lips, "Well done, thou good and faithful servant." So Owen, back to you, Dr. Roberts, pardon me, to highlight some more features of our town hall presentation.
Thank you again, Dr. Reed. So in our quarterly updates to the stakeholders, we will provide you with updates. This is just a mock-up of the data. We want to ensure that we keep you abreast as to the donations received, the number of donors, and a trend over time. This is not live data today, but it has a backend to this slide that will fill in the data and give you a graphical representation of an update regarding the finances and regarding the number of pledges and donors that we have on a regular basis. We'll do that on a quarterly basis. We will have a thermometer that keeps track of the data as well. And so we set weekly and monthly targets. These are benchmarks that we're seeking to achieve. And we want to share each time how we are moving toward the target of $6 million US dollars. And we will show a percentage of the actuals as we move along the journey. So this is just a screen that will give you the information relating to the progress being made on a regular basis. Once again, this will be in our town hall every quarter as we go forward. And we will allow the structure to be able to do that work. So my brothers and sisters and friends, we're ready to take off on this mission. Just like NASA, we are going to a place where no man has gone before. And so we want you to join us on that ride because indeed, the machinery for success begins with prayer. The Holy Spirit is the fuel in our tank. And of course, the contacts and the relationship that you as alumni and friends have as we do this work becomes a cargo aboard this journey. And so we look forward to that journey and to the accomplishment of this mission so that at last, on that day, when Christ comes, we can hear the word. This is just a promotional flyer that we will be sending to all of the conferences and to the churches so that everybody can have this data in their hand. So once again, thank you for giving us this opportunity. And at this point, we want you to be clear, what we are requesting from our alumni and friends and families that have attended and have been associated with the West Indies Training School, West Indies College, and NCU University. Indeed, my friends, one, we are soliciting your prayers for the university church complex. And we are asking for that support in terms of a prayer that will occur on a regular basis, on every fourth Wednesday of each month, where will be a prayer vigil. And that indeed will be fostered by Pastor Haye will be sending out information so that you can join that prayer vigil. Also, we want you to consider very carefully to join this effort, as I said before, because there are three important functional sets that this complex will carry out. One is the church sanctuary for worship, but also the seminary for the training of the gospel ministers and a community outreach center. And so Mr. Young will provide lots of details in a moment. But more importantly, consider making a tangible sacrificial donation as an individual to this project so that indeed, we can accomplish the task. And so if you want to reach both Dr. Reed or myself or Pastor Haye, these are our contacts in terms of phone numbers and email. Thank you very much for your support, and thank you for what you will do to the name, to the honor and the glory of God.
Wonderful, wonderful. And Dr. Roberts and Dr. Reed, thank you too. And wouldn't it be an awesome time to look at the work as it is progressing?
Exciting.
Wonderful, wonderful. Gentlemen, ju- ju- just two words about that.
Well, listen, this is really an exciting moment. And I know that my friend, Dr. Reed, is even more excited about this because he has started this journey sometime now. So Dr. Neal, I'm sure you're bubbling up all inside.
Exactly, as the, as the cement falls, the building is going up. In first response, and I hope more cement will continue to flow because the more it flows, the taller the building gets. And I just want to say, this is the closest we have ever been in the history of N C U to having a church on campus, the closest. And this makes me excited.
Wonderful. I know some other people who are very excited about this, including the President of Jamaica Union of Seventh-day Adventists and the Chairman of the Northern Caribbean University Board. And we're talking about Pastor Everett Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
I don't know what the thoughts were in your mind as you were watching.
Well, excitement. I was excited based on what I saw. I felt that God's timing is always right. And I was reflecting on the, the presidents of N C U West Indies College, the Chairman of the Board, the pastors of the church, who have served this university and who have poured out their life in service to God and the institution. And I've attempted to build a church. I said to myself, we are building on that foundation. And I just, I, I, I just want to, want to, as I, as I try to temper my excitement just to thank the church pastor, the present president, Dr. Edwards, Pastor Heye, Pastor Neil Reed, and sorry, Dr. Neil Reed and Dr. Roberts for coming on board at this particular point in time. And the Jamaica Union Conference, we have committed ourselves to this program. I have as Chairman of the Board and I have as, as Union President. But that commitment is not only a personal commitment because I will be giving, I have already, when we launched some time ago, I have decided to, on a, on a monthly basis, to make my sacrificial contribution. So I have committed to, 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 to assist in the financing of the project. But the Jamaica Union Conference, the union has decided to, to, to commit at least ten million Jamaican dollars towards that. So it is beyond need, it's beyond all present leadership, the union, whatever happens after us. And we, we would love, I would love for this project to be completed within two years. Because I sense the excitement from Dr. Roberts, the excitement and passion from Dr. Neil Reed and the commitment from Desmond Young, the, the, the technical person behind all of this, you know. And so I have, I have a lot of confidence in the, in, in, in the team, but more so confidence in God and those persons who have benefited from this, this special value-added education that Westernness College N C U provides, that wherever they are, that they will be coming on board. And I just want to, as I, as I, as I, as I talk about the way I feel, the way Pastor Walker feels, the way Pastor Bowe is, the way the directors, and I have had opportunity to speak with Pastor Dr. Peter Carr, the, the Chairman of the, the Vice Chair of the Board and President of the Atlantic Caribbean Union. They are excited also because they own N C U. N C U is in a unique situation where it is owned by Jamu and Atco. And Pastor Carr, the, 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 the leadership of the four conferences there, the leadership of the five conferences in Jamaica. We believe that now is the time. Now is the time for us to mobilize leadership. Now is the time for us to, 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 to mobilize and make, make contact with and to, and to invite, not to, not to, not to beg, but to invite our alumni who have benefited from, from the, the, the service of, of Western College N C U to give back as we seek to construct this church complex. And I say church complex because I'm excited about it that it is not only a complex to, for, you know, for us to, to instill spirit, continue rather, to instill spiritual values in people. But it is a complex that will serve students, will serve workers, will serve the community and will enhance the overall mission of the Seventh-day Adventist Church. This is the day I am happy to be on board. And I want to invite all of my, my fellow graduates of N C two, N C U, let, wherever you are. And I am not only going to remain silent, I'm calling those persons whom I know. I am, I'm getting in touch with them and I'm sharing the excitement. And I'm going to be inviting them to come on board. Let us come on board and let us together, in a united thrust, erect this complex to the honor and glory of God. And in, 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 as, as, as a legacy to the men and women who have poured out their lives in service to this dynamic institution.
Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you so much, Pastor Everett Brown. It's great to know that the Chairman of the Board is not just on the board, but he is on board.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, God bless you. All right. Another person who, I tell you, the last time, we were so excited to hear from Pastor Levi Johnson, President of Central Jamaica Conference. And it was just awesome to, to, to hear him as he, 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 he not only stated but repeated his commitment to this project. Doctor, well, Pastor Johnson, good afternoon.
I don't, I don't see him.
We, we don't have him on at this moment, but he's definitely going to be on. Well, we hope to have him on.
I know, I know he is tied on at a constituency meeting. And I know he was trying to wrap up to get on here, but.
In between, okay.
Yes.
All right, all right.
Let's move on to the N C U President.
Yes. Right, so, 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 Mr. President, I want you to leave a few words of encouragement. And you've already, I know you've already thanked the folks who are already on board, but words of encouragement for others.
Well, you know, Arnold, thank you very much for having me on and good afternoon to all your listeners. This is a historic moment in the history of Northern Caribbean University. And we're talking about building a church in the second century of N C U in Manchester to serve as a memorial for, for God having led this institution for over one hundred years. And we who are alive today, we get to participate. We get to do our part in building this church that is a place of worship for all people to give praise to God. As I travel around and meet alumni, I hear so many stories of how God has been good to them. Now is an opportunity to express in a tangible way that your commitment to God and to say to God, "Look, you have been good to me and this is an opportunity for me to help to build a house in which your name will be glorified and which people will learn about your love and come to surrender to you." So this is the rallying cry to, to all our alumni and friends all across the globe. Let's build this house of worship for God. Let us unite. And you know, when you, when you think in 2017, when I came, I saw the church sitting there with nature trying to reclaim it. And there were others who were ridiculing it because they never thought that the church would be finished and it would be built. And then the leaders came together, the leaders of the university, the, the Jamu Atco, the church pastor, and everyone came together and said, "No, as it was in the time of Nehemiah, we are going to rise to the occasion, we're going to rally the people and we are going to build a house to, to memorialize our God and to thank Him. Dr. Roberts, Neil Reed and others are, they are leading the effort now with Pastor Heye and we will give them our full support." So we invite all our alumni and friends to pray together and to give tangibly so that this house, this house that is so needed, this complex that will represent God on the university campus to which everyone can be attracted. Many of our colleagues have church complexes and it has been a blessing. N C U will finally have its own church complex in which people of all races, color and creed can enter and give thanks to the almighty God who has blessed us, who has done so much for us. And I too am excited and joined with the Chairman of the Board, Pastor Brown, and others in excitement that is going to happen. And it's going to happen early in the second century of N C U in Manchester and will be the memorial and the centennial building to honor our great and loving God.
Right, thank you so much, Dr. Lincoln Edwards. And, you know, amazing just to see, you know, the excitement that's coming from the President of the Union, the President of Northern Caribbean University and the President of the conferences across Jamaica and beyond, the Alumni Association, everyone is excited about this. Thank you once again, Dr. Edwards. God bless you.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Lincoln Edwards there, President of Northern Caribbean University. We have a special item of music as we continue this, our special town hall meeting as we say thanks to those who have given and to encourage those who have not yet had the opportunity to participate in the process of building God's temple.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Love it.
Yes, the group events, yes, one of our talented groups here at. Yes, the group Evans, yes, one of our talented groups here at Northern Caribbean University with Spread Love. And I know you're excited and I know you've seen, you've, you've, you've seen a little bit of what is happening on the building site, but the man who is going to tell us even more and in more detail is Mr. Desmond Young, the project manager. Mr. Young, great to have you back.
Afternoon, Mr. Kelly and good afternoon to your listeners.
All right. Now, I know you gave us a, a, a great update the last time, but I know that some things have changed. I hear about moving from what phase one to phase two?
Yes, yes, indeed. We, we had completed phase one. We completed phase one on time and below budget. And so we were able to do some other things. So we added the ramp and stairs to that lower basement section just to make it clear that the building will be code compliant when it's completed and we will have access for the physical challenge. But, but before I go into my presentation, I, I would like to, to say just that for me, a while ago, I was listening to our union president, Pastor Everett Brown, and it was like deja vu. It, it reminded me of that meeting in 2017. And, uh, but he was more energetic because at the end he got up and he's a tall man and I'm a very short one. And he was saying, well, I want this thing to happen and I don't know why it can't happen. But I don't think that he assumed that it would be so soon. Wanted it to happen, but I, I'm telling him, it has been remarkable. The support has been great from the union, from the conferences, the addition of Pastor Reed to cheer the task force and fundraising and the addition of Dr. Roberts.
Definitely.
To deal with the marketing. This is exactly what Pastor Haye and myself, we were agitating about when I was asked to do the first presentation and I explained to them the type of structure you would need to run a project like this because it's at a very large stakeholder base. So I too, I am, I'm very pleased with the activities so far. Very, very good going. There's much more for us to do. I, I see that our brothers and sisters are on board. So to God be the glory, we'll go straight to them. So I will go to the presentation and just try to complement what was said previously and. Quarterly reports come, you will not just get words, you will see the progress, you will see pictorial progress, you will see video progress. When the website is up and running, you will have weekly progress report that sees what is happening, what happened one week ago and what happened now, where you can track the, the, the progress of the project and you can see what your funds did. Now, we can design all we want to design and plan all we, and we can't do it without you. We have to do it together. And so far, praise God, between phase one to now, it has been wonderful. So we started phase two on the 23rd of August and the plan sees us completing it on the 23rd of March next year, 2022. It's approximately 90 million Jamaican dollars and the scope, the area, the total area that to be covered there is an additional 10,000 square feet. External, we have earthworks and external works, concrete works will be there. Lot of reinforcement, farm work and a lot of structural steel because you have that wide span that we have to cover with special structural elements and those elements have to be pre-purchased. And then there'll be a steel leg which also has to be pre-purchased. So the tempo of the cash flow for this phase of the, the, the project, as was explained by Dr. Roberts and, and Pastor Reed is very intensive because it's, the material component is very high. We also have to be mindful of the risk associated with material costs during this period because you know steel prices escalated. So we will do the floor finishes, drywall, ceilings, wall finishes, windows and doors, electrical works, plumbing works, and that left side area will be covered. You see it identified in red and so that, that area can be utilized for whatever function the steering committee will decide and instruct us to do and everything else fall in line. The, the base of that structure was reinforced with columns and beams to take the upper section that will go there. So what you're looking at now is some more of the structural details. This was done by Peter Jervis and Associates that will support that floor, that ceiling which becomes the floor of the sanctuary. So one side of the sanctuary will be on a suspended slab and the other side will be a slab on the mall area where you saw the concrete pump and the concrete shop stationary when, when Dr. Roberts was doing his video. So let's go to the next steps. We're in phase two, by God's grace and with your help, your contributions, we will continue phase two. Active fundraising, you see the team is energized and ready to go and active and is connecting all over. And so by God's grace, we will complete phase two. Just about the time we are getting close to complete phase two, we will do the cost estimate for phase three. And then again, the fundraising which will be continuous kicks in and then we'll implement phase three. So what I would like to leave you with is just to show you what has happened in phase two in a summary format, in a pictorial format. You will notice that although we were doing the flooring, we were not mixing the concrete by hand in our project management plan. All structural concrete has to be ready mixed concrete where we can guarantee a strength. So even the concrete for the floor is ready mixed and pumped, delivered to guarantee the strength. This particular mixed design, we had fibers in it, reinforcing fibers. So we didn't need to use the mesh because the concrete itself have the special fibers that provides the reinforcement. So we are using modern technology, new technology, highly technical elements to make sure we deliver the right requirement for structural integrity for, of our projects. So now that floor area that you are looking at where we were pouring the concrete, that entire area is now completed. So when you go further on and you see all the photographs, you'll realize that we did pour more concrete and we did finish that area and now we're dealing with some wall finishes. And come this week, the electrician and the plumbers will go in and the photograph on the right, you can see that that same area is completely, complete concrete. So we did pour more concrete after that. And even with the issues with concrete being scarce and material being scarce, we didn't have any challenges. We have very, very good relationship with the stakeholders and we are able to make special arrangements. And you see at the entrance to the left there, you see the ramp with the staircase. So again, even the basement will be compliant to modern building codes and we have access for the physical challenge. So my brothers and sisters, let's build God's house at NCU. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Desmond Young. And so now you have a better picture. In fact, what you saw earlier on, the video with the concrete being poured, you're seeing that very same area. And now you know that it's, that area has been completed and there is more work going on. Mr. Young, thank you once again for sharing with us and for, you know, spearheading, for, for guiding this project from the, the, the side of the construction and all that technical aspect of the work. Thank you once again.
You are welcome.
All right. Uh, Pastor Haye, I know right now you are excited to see the presentation, but truth be told, I know it is not anything that you wouldn't have seen before because I, I don't know if a day passes when you don't go on the site and you know, any day I pass by and decide to look what's going on there, I see Pastor Haye. Pastor Haye, good afternoon.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kelly. And you know, there's a saying which goes this way, participation in the action gives you satisfaction. So to be here, I am excited, I am elated, yet humbled to know that I'm a part of something that is doable because it is being led by God. We thank you alumni, we thank you friends of Northern Caribbean University for your continued contribution. I want to tell you that I am on board making sacrificial giving each month. My family is on board, the NCU church is on board. Individuals are doing monthly deduction from their salary. Individuals are given right there each Sabbath as we meet for service and on the different online giving platform. So I'm appealing to our brothers and sisters, we are appealing to friends of, of NCU. We are appealing to our, our alumni to get on board and to make this happen. It is doable under God and we will follow the principle that we were taught here in Jamaica which says one, one cocoa, full basket. So you give your little, I give my little and this will happen because it is being led by God.
Wonderful. All right. You probably want to share with us two things that make you really, really excited about this project.
Well, Mr. Kelly, um, the two things that really stand out in my mind now that it, it is really motivating me intrinsically. Number one, this project has been here sitting for a long, long time. And you know, a few Sabbaths ago, I, I went to church and the building that we occupy, the main auditorium, we had to spend a little over one hour before we could really get in for worship because the building was not leaking from the side through the windows. It was leaking from the roof, that 71 year old building. The time has come for us to erect not only a sanctuary to worship God, but also the seminary where the, the, the men of God can be trained to bring this good news of salvation far and wide and likewise to reach out to the community. I'm also excited about the location. It is, it is so serene. We, 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 we can do many, many things down there. The parking area, it is just ideal. It is the first building that you will enter, lead into the university. We are excited. We invite you friends, alumni, get on board as you give and as we give together to make it happen.
All right. Thank you so much once again, Pastor Joel Haye. And Pastor Haye, of course, is our church pastor here at Northern Caribbean University Church. And, uh, and if you, if you watch him closely on, in the daytime, you'd think he's also the foreman on the project. Always on location to ensure that everything is going right. And gentlemen, Dr. Reed and, and Dr. Roberts. I don't know if you're paying attention to what's happening in the chat, you know, but I see where a number of people are excited. I see one person saying, as the cement falls, the building goes up, let it flow.
That is exciting that people would take time on this Sunday afternoon to tune into this town hall meeting because this is where the action is. And as they, we would say when we're having evangelistic crusades, there's no place like this place, anywhere near this place. So this must be the place. So carry on, Mr. Kelly, you're doing a great job.
All right. Okay. And we're seeing here also someone saying here, uh, where's the message? I, I, I lost that one, but I see Charles Evans saying, good afternoon, everyone. I don't have much to give, but I will certainly make a monthly commitment, really inspiring to watch the work happening. Really an inspiration indeed. And I see where Charles is also asking for a reminder of the timeline of the phases. Mr. Young?
Yes, um, we, we completed phase one, we are into phase two and phase two is scheduled to complete on the 23rd of March, 2022. After we have completed phase two, we will cast phase three and move into phase three immediately.
Right.
One of the things I like is the fact that I mean, you know, you, you don't wait for some things to happen. It's just amazing, like on the property, we see where even shade trees are being planted long before they'll be needed. In a sense, you know, because as in every church yard, you know, you normally have your shade trees. So even a simple matter of these trees, they're in from right now so that they will be fully grown as trees providing the shade by the time the project is completed. I see, uh, well, a number of persons also saying thanks and Jasmine Hill is saying, great work and great progress. God is able, yes, and number of persons also commending Evans on their musical selection. Boy, I tell you, Dr., uh, Dr. Roberts, what's the feeling like where you are right now? Dr. Roberts, not hearing?
I said I cannot contain myself. I'm so excited because of all the commitments we're hearing. And while we are seeing this mo- motion, truly this is a mission. And indeed, we look forward to carrying everybody on board and landing safely when this work based upon President Brown's dream that in two years we will acquire these funds and therefore can complete this work. I know that Mr. Young has said the building will lag behind the fundraiser. The, the building will actually lag behind the fundraising, but we want to speed up the fundraising in a way that we are ahead to ensure that we will not keep Mr. Young and the contractor waiting on us. But we want to have the funds available so that we can carry out our God-given duty to pay on time and to ensure that the work is done.
All right. Wonderful. And Dr. Neil Reed, I know you have a special, uh, a special function. You have a special role to perform this afternoon as we continue to thank everyone who has given and to. as we continue to thank everyone who has given and to encourage others to participate in the process. And so what we're gonna do, we're, we're gonna, uh, let's see. I think, do, do we, do we take the other musical selection first? All right. So let's take another musical selection and then Dr. Neil Reed will be addressing us. Okay. Welcome back. Welcome back. All right. So Dr. Neil Reed, as you heard, in the early, when was it? Just after 2000, 2002?
2003, 2006.
Right, to 2006. Yes. Dr. Neil Reed was church pastor here at Northern Caribbean University. And there was a large part of this vision that was born at that time. And now he is back with us and, you know, excited to be a part of the project, to see it through to completion, to be a part of the team, taking it through to completion. Dr. Neil Reed, over to you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kelly. Again, it's a joy to join my friends and extended family in Jamaica and around the world to see and experience this town hall. It's the first ever as it relates to our church in over 102 years. And I, I feel so excited to see it with my, with my two eyes. I just want to close out our town hall. I don't know if we will take any questions, but just want to share a charge with the listening audience. And I, it's gonna be brief. I want to challenge you to the reality that we can do this, all of it. I'm reflecting on when the children of Israel entered the promised land. It took them almost 480 years to build a temple. So, you know, we may say a hundred years is such a long time, but it took the children of Israel over 400 years, almost 500 years to build a temple. Listen to what David told Solomon, his son, before he died. He said, "Take heed now, for the Lord hath chosen you to build an house for the sanctuary. Be strong and do it." Just as how David spoke with his son Solomon, I believe God is speaking to us, his sons and daughters, to build a house. And I want to lift up just three quick points from this text. Number one, God has called this generation. Notice what the text says. It says, "Take heed now." In an, in other words, take it seriously. I'm surprised that of all the generations that have existed in the history of NCU, this generation is the one that God has chosen. And what is a generation? A generation is the period of time from the birth of a child to when that child has his or her own child. And that is estimated to be about 25 years. So we've had about four generations of people who have passed through the halls of NCU. Yet God has chosen this generation. And to make it sound crazy, God has chosen what I would call the COVID generation. Stores are closing down. Schools are closing down. Governments are closing down. Transportation systems are closing down. And yet God has called this generation to open up a sanctuary for his honor and glory. That's crazy. But God thinks, God acts differently from us. So my word to you this evening is that God has called you, this generation, to open up a sanctuary on the campus of NCU. Second point I want to make, not only has God called, but God has chosen. In Matthew, the Bible says, "Many are called, but few are chosen." You can choose to be chosen. God is calling many people to contribute to this building fund. But the chosen are the ones who give, who contribute. Many are called, but few are chosen. My wife and I are among those who are chosen. Every single month, we're gonna give to this project. And we believe that when we give, God is gonna bring out of the red soil on the campus of NCU, a beautiful structure that will bless the world for generations to come. So God has chosen this generation. Alumni, faculty and staff, if you are alive, you can choose to be a part of the chosen to complete this structure. So God has called, God has chosen. And the third point I want to make, God has charged. What is the charge? King David told Solomon, "To build an house, be strong and do it." Okay, it's not enough for us to start this structure, Mr. Young. It's not enough, Dr. Edwards, to put personnel on the job. We put personnel on the job. We follow the guidelines by the engineers and the project manager, but we need to finish it. It's not enough to start running the race. Bolt will tell you that, yeah, you can run as fast as you want, but you've got to cross the winning line, the, the, the finish line to receive the prize. I want us to receive the prize. But of course, the prize is not a finished building. The ultimate prize is really the crown of life. And the church is the place, the venue, where individuals from Mandeville, from around Jamaica, from around the world will come and will see and hear what God is doing in the lives of students. Many students who come not knowing Christ. But as it happened to me at the Oakwood College Church, when I went there, that's where I met Christ for myself in the beauty of holiness. So I'm calling the chosen to receive God's charge, to not only build, but finish. And so the doctors, the nurses, the business people, the technologists, the teachers, anyone who has ever set foot on that campus, God is calling you to be chosen to finish this work. And so I hope you will choose to be chosen. And how do you choose to be chosen? By praying for this project, number one. Number two, contributing to this project. There's no limit on what you can give. Whatever you choose in your heart to give, all we know is that God loves a cheerful giver. So pray for the project, donate to the project. And thirdly, invite others to be a part of it. Do not keep the blessing for yourself. When we bless God, God will bless us. And we dare not keep God's blessings to ourselves. Okay, so, Mr. Kelly, this is the charge. God is calling us. God has chosen this generation. And God has charged us not only to start the work, but finish it. So I want to ask, who is with me? Dr. Roberts, are you with us? Mr. Young, Pastor Hay, Pastor Brown, Mr. Kelly, Dr. Edwards.
Yes, sir.
And you qualify for being with us by putting some money in the plate. It could be a physical plate or the electronic plate. I believe that we can do it by the grace of God. And I'm looking forward to the next town hall meeting when we shall see more vignettes and hear more testimonials just to what God is doing on the campus of NCU to prepare ambassadors to take the glorious gospel to the ends of the world so that we can go home and be prepared to receive Him as our Lord and Savior. So back to you, Mr. Kelly. That's all I've got.
Mr. Kelly, thank you so much. And Dr. Roberts?
Pastor Johnson, Pastor Johnson is online. So let's capture him while we have him online and have him say a few words because I know he's a powerhouse. He called me and woke me up out of my sleep in Florida. And I'm so happy he did because he did not on the way woke me up out of my sleep. He then got Pastor Brown on my back and thanked me to God. I'm alive and I'm here today.
Praise God. Praise God. You see, having, having shared with Pastor Joel and I know the, the burden he is carrying to ensure that the NCU church is built. So he shared his passion and purpose and he did it with a lot of power. And when you have power, passion and purpose, you have to do something with it. You gotta find an outlet to share that. So I contacted Dr. Neil Reed and I shared my passion, my purpose and my power as to how as a team, we can fulfill this dream. Uh, many persons who would have passed through the walls of Northern Caribbean University and NCU and who are alive West Indian Training College, many persons have been dreaming for us to have a, a church of choice, a seminary of choice that we all can be proud of. You shared something the other day, Dr. Roberts. I don't know where you got it from. In fact, it's a part of our history that when we, when the leaders founded West Indian Training College, it was a part of the MOU that we would serve students from Africa. You mentioned that. Hey, so this is not just a project for Jamaica. It's not a Jamaican project. We're not building a seminary for Jamaicans. We're building a seminary for the world. And that has been the dream of past students and present students. So when Joel shared with me, I shared with Dr. Neil Reed and commended him. And I felt guilty, perhaps it's the first time I'm sharing this. I felt guilty. But as the president of the Church in Central Jamaica Conference, and if, let me, let me say, our external customers, because Neil is, works from overseas, a former student, yes. But when I heard what he, along with his team members were doing, raising funds for this project, I said, man, I have to be more involved. And that's how I got to you, Dr. Roberts. It's a burden, it's a passion that I receive from Joel and his team members. Shared it with Dr. Neil because I had the mind to work a long time. But having associated myself with you gentlemen and all the team members, I have to move. Hence the union president, my friend, and I know that he too has a passion. Oh my God, the fire is burning, guys. The fire is burning. We burned fires of hope in Central Jamaica Conference and we baptized thousands of souls. And it was Dr. Roberts' initiative, fires of hope. And I have no doubt, I have no doubt, Dr. Lincoln, I have no doubt, working with this group of leaders from Jamaica and the Atlantic Union. And when we connect with students of West Indies College, West Indian Training Colleges, they are alive, and Northern Caribbean University, I have no doubt that our dreams will become a reality. We have been dreaming for too long, guys. The time has come for our dream to become a reality. I want to thank you, Dr. Roberts, for accepting the call and Pastor Brown for asking me to be the John DeBaptiste. But my work is not yet over. In terms of what I need to do, I will be of service to Pastor Brown, the one who will ensure that we pass through Canaan's land. I'm excited. I'm excited. My, uh, my officers are fully with the program. I apologize for not, uh, being able to join you before. We had our constituency meeting and I was in the hot seat. You know what the constituency meeting is all about. I was in the hot seat and I could not leave. But my mind and my heart was here and I'm happy that I'm a part of this initiative. It will grow from strength to strength when all of us will possess the mind to work. Thank you.
And thank you too. Wow, wow, man on fire, I must say. Doc, I don't know, but, uh, but just in case anybody missed the information at the beginning or in the middle, uh, how to give, we want to probably, uh, share with, share with them one more time so that, you know, they will not be able to miss out on that. We want to thank you so much for being a part of this and for attending this town hall meeting. There will be more in the future as we continue to keep you updated on the progress of the, the project as we continue to build God's sanctuary here at Northern Caribbean University. Dr. Roberts?
Sir, thank you so much.
Before Dr. Roberts?
I want to thank all of those who are on the platform, our alumni and friends on behalf of, uh, Dr. Neil Reed, myself, Pastor Everett Brown, Johnson and President Edwards, Pastor Hay, thanking all of us for having taken the time to be on this platform and to participate. Also want to thank you, Mr. Kelly, for hosting and for leading this effort. And thanking the young men for their music as well. And Mr. Gus Ford, who actually made certain that this happened today. We look forward to this every quarter and to ensure that this work will continue. Pastor Johnson, we can pray to that end. And thank you as well, Mr. Young, for the details you've provided as we go forward. And so let's give God the honor and the glory in all that we do.
All right. And I think Pastor Brown was, did he get a word in?
Yes, Dr. Roberts, one of the principal, well, one of our main target group is represented here. I see Dr. Villarreal might be. And I know him very well because we, 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 we shared space while we were at, um, Western Indies College, NCU. And it is, it is, it is that group. It is, it is us, graduates of NCU, Western Indies College, whom the, you know, that has the resource, that God has entrusted the resource. And I'm happy to see Villarreal here. I know he, um, is nowhere near here, but wherever he is, I, I'm gonna ask him to, to, to use his influence to touch base with, um, of fellow alumni so that we can, that we will be able to raise the funds in record time to complete this building in record time. It happened, it happened under the leadership of Nehemiah. And it can happen today that this building will be built to the honor and glory of God. Money is not the problem. God has the money. It is the structure and the commitment. And I'm, 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 I'm just leaving because I sense that we have a group of committed persons who are going to allow God to lead us to do what He wants us to do now. Thank you.
All right. And thank you too, Mr. President. And to everyone who is watching, everyone who is listening, all those who have participated and even those who were commenting in the chat, we want to thank you so much for being a part of this. And we look forward to the next one. God bless you. God bless you as we work together, building his sanctuary here on the hill, the beacon on the hill at Northern Caribbean University. Thanks again to the entire team and to everyone watching.